Welcome. Smithfield Town Council Committee meeting, September the 22nd, 2025. At this time, I'd like to entertain, have someone entertain a motion for closed session for the purpose of personnel matters.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the purpose of personnel matters, more specifically evaluations of the appointed portions by town council pursuant to 2.2.3711 A1 of the Code of Virginia.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. At this time, Vice Mayor and I will be going in to do these two evaluations that we have, and then we'll be back, and I'll entertain another closed session for B and C.
Let me do roll call, go into closed session.
Okay.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeWismann?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Is this what we do in closed session? Do we sit here?
Yep.
No, we don't.
Does everybody back?
No, we don't.
We don't have a lawyer, man.
We can go into open session and if we're going back into close, he's going to be ready for us back there.
Mm-hmm. So I need a motion to go back into open session. Bill's the one who can do that.
Yeah. I think anybody can make that motion.
Yeah.
I make the motion. I make the motion to go back into open session and file in close session for a purpose of personnel matters pursuant to 2.2, tech 3711, Alpha 1 of the Code of Virginia.
We have a motion. We have a second. Call for the question? I think this is where just me and...
Right. No, I think we can vote. I think...
You can vote. You can...
We can all... We can vote to go for y'all, everybody to back into open session. We cannot vote to certify that only those... You got to make a second motion on that.
Correct.
Councilman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beadmeier?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that in closed session, we discussed only the relative facts for the purpose of personnel matters, more specifically evaluations of appointed portions of town council pursuant to 2.2, 3711, Alpha 1 of the Code of Virginia.
Okay, we have a motion. I don't know that we... Who makes a second then if it was just me and him in there?
You.
You can make the second.
I was gonna hope I can. Yeah, and I'll second that. Can you call for the question?
Now, am I calling Councilman Butler to abstain or just you two?
No.
Just to us.
Those two.
Just us. Just us.
All right. Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we go into closed session for the purpose of discussion of acquisition disposition of real property, more specifically the Grange at 10 Main pursuant to section 2.2, 3711a3 of the Code of Virginia, and furthermore, we'll be in closed session for the discussion of cost negotiations, more specifically right-of-way acquisition of Red Point Tap House pursuant to 2.2, 3711a3 of the Code of Virginia.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the question?
Councilwoman Beadmeier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Butler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
All right.
All right. (applause)
...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have myself as chairman, Councilwoman Biebermeyer, and Councilman Bowman. On the Water and Sewer Committee, and I will say, Mr. Mayor, I have A, B, and C here. I just didn't get to get it on here. But for Part A, the town manager has a town code update for utilities.
Yes, sir. Included in your packet is a red line copy of Chapter 82 of the Town Code. It's the section that deals with utilities, and we've made some recommended changes. Currently, the water and sewer rates are in different parts of this code. And we are recommending that we move them all into the same section so that it's easy to find for the residents, for staff. And when we do our annual budget adoption and we adopt new rates, it's all in one section of the ordinance. So none of the rates have changed. They're the same as what was adopted in the budget, but it's just been consolidated in one section. There was also a larger section, 82-75E, which dealt with some residential construction that was done in the '90s that is complete and no longer relevant. So we've recommended removing that. There's some other minor changes throughout, but those were the major changes in the sections. So if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
So in summary, I think it's just kind of refining the document and updating. No increases in charge. Just refinement of the document. And then we'll see this for a vote at the upcoming town council meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right. And then, anything else?
I have one other, and this is just an information kind of piece. I picked up over the weekend. There's some chatter on Facebook about water rates doubling and people's bills going up substantially. So I took the liberty to go through. We did do a rate adjustment at the beginning of the budget year. So it took effect into July. And our water rates went from $7 per thousand gallons to $8.50 per thousand. Our sewer went from $3.99 to $6. At the same time, HRSD also did their annual increase, which they went up $1 per thousand gallons from 11.07 to 12.07. So our average consumer is somewhere between $6,000 and $10,000 gallons every two months. And so for the 8,000 gallon consumer, our rates meant a $28 increase in their bill. For those people, there's some of the ones that I saw on Facebook. I went and checked, and they were like 15,000 gallons a users. So that's $52, almost $53 every two months. So once you add in the HRSD piece of that, again, for 15,000, that's 67,000 gallons. They're $67 per every two months. Again, that's if their usage stayed the same. Some of the folks that I saw that were having some concerns, their usage went up significantly. We've had a couple that were leaks or the worst, worse as far as being able to help folks, it's when they've had a period of consistent usage. It goes through the roof for one bellic cycle and it goes back to normal. So something, whether they have a leak or, let's say, sometimes they fill the pool and they know exactly where it went. Other times, somebody left a water hose on and it didn't get caught. So things like that, I don't have really any mechanisms to help them with their bills. But if they have a leak and they can show proof that they found it and fixed it, we have abilities to help folks with their bills. But I just wanted to be able to mention that in case you hear it in the public. Our rates did go up, but it's nothing that would have caused anybody's bills to double or triple. Those are probably one-offs where their usage went up at the same time.
And, Mr. Chairman, to that point, I think a lot of people miss the...
In the form of operational updates, I have three updates I would like to share. Of course, the first thing that's coming up is our National Night Out, which is October the 7th from 5:00 to 7:00. And I have a resolution, Mr. Mayor, for you to sign so that we can move forward with that. And if your schedule will allow, we look forward to seeing you all at that event. The next thing is Top Cop nomination has been submitted and selection has been made. And we will be having a dinner on October 25th at 6:30 in Hilton Garden in Suffolk, Hilton Garden Inn in Suffolk on October 25th at 6:30. Also, you all are cordially invited to that event. I would advise the tickets are $50 per ticket. Normally, the town has furnished a table and a table seats eight people. Okay? And the last thing that I have for operational updates is Halloween, October 31st, which say trick or treat is from 5:00 to 7:00. However, the streets will be closed an hour before and close an hour after to ensure that we will be able to make sure that the vehicle of traffic is removed from Main Street. That goes in the operational updates that I made, that I have. If you want to have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Hal?
Councilman Bowman, I have a question.
See you, please, sir.
Chief Hal, I noticed you had a security meeting on Jersey Park. Was that with the folks that are doing the rehabilitation of that community?
Yes, sir. I did have a meeting with them early on before they started construction.
So are they doing, coming up with any novel ideas or new changes? I know that he had discussed that some additional security measures were potentially in the works and he was going to consult. Are they moving forward with anything new? I mean, are we advising them to do anything differently? I just...
We've made some suggestions while the construction is going on that will make things safer. And they are taking heed to some of these suggestions that we've made. And once the construction is complete, then we've also made some suggestions to them that we hope to continue to work through and make those things happen.
Councilwoman Butler's been somewhat involved. Valerie, do you have anything to add to that inquiry?
Well, I didn't realize that Green Street had had a security meeting with the police force. And I did have a conversation with Chase. I also had a conversation with the officer that heads up National Night Out.
Sergeant McGow.
McGow. And he was pleased with his security meeting. I will tell you, Darren, the old property managers had made a commitment to us what they would do for security measures. And they never followed through with that. So I think Chase had reached out for the town's recommendation. And based on my conversation with him and Sergeant McGow, they're trying to come up with a game plan because the security measures now, they're concerned about what's going on during construction phases. I don't know if you read it out there, every time I go out there, my heart breaks. It's awful out there. I did take some pictures. I've kind of taken that project on myself. So they have started construction. But I don't really know how much of final security that they can do before the construction is completed. But they do have some security concerns about while construction is going on. And I think between the two, they're trying to work out logistics for that.
Is there a way that we can, can they come and talk to us at some point and let us know? Or you're handling that on your end? Or, I mean, they've come and talked to us before when it was a re-zoning thing.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Hal about that since they have now officially taken over. He did indicate that he was going to come and give us a status update pretty early on. So if we don't have them in October, it'll be November. But he did agree to come and give a project update.
Thank you, Councilwoman Butler, and thank you, Chief Hal.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Further questions, Chief? Mr. Mayor?
I know you've probably been asked this before about closing the street down by, I guess it's Institute. Is that a little small piece?
Thomas.
I've get people talk about that all the time.
Yes, sir.
And I know you've given reasons why you didn't want to do that. Can you explain that again to us?
This year, we have, we've taken a second look at it. And we will have an officer in the general vicinity to ensure that any vehicle of traffic that's in that area is kept to a minimum and kept very slow. So we will have an officer based off the concerns that have been submitted to the police department.
Some of the issue is, once we've closed everything else, that's one of the only ways the residents back on Washington Street, that everybody can't get there. So we can't really close that. But as the chief mentioned, we are going to have some additional personnel in that corner. Try to keep kids on the sidewalks and cars on the street.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Yes, and Chief?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor?
No, sorry. You didn't mention Grace Street, but Grace will be closed as well as Main.
Yes, sir. We were closing it at the very same time. In years past, we've moved from Main Street to Grace. But now, the last couple of years, I think we've decided to close Grace down at the same time.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Thank you, Chief Hal.
Yes, sir.
Be safe. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on with the Water and Sewer Committee. Mr. Cutler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have myself as chairman, Councilwoman Biebermeyer, and Councilman Bowman on the Water and Sewer Committee. And I will say, Mr. Mayor, I have an A, B, and C here. I just didn't get to get it on here. But for Part A, Town Manager has a town code update for utilities.
Yes, sir. Included in your packet is a redline copy of Chapter 82 of the Town Code, is the section that deals with utilities. And we've made some recommended changes. Currently, the water and sewer rates are in different parts of this code. And we have, we're recommending that we move them all into the same section so that it's easy to find for the residents, for staff. And when we do our annual budget adoption and we adopt new rates, it's all in one section of the ordinance. So none of the rates have changed. They're the same as what was adopted in the budget, but it's just been consolidated in one section. There was also a larger section, 82-75E, which dealt with some residential construction that was done in the 90s that is, you know, complete and no longer relevant. So we've recommended removing that. There's some other minor changes throughout, but those were the major changes in the sections. So if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
So in summary, I think it's just kind of refining the document and updating. No increases in charge, just refinement of the document. And then we'll see this for a vote at the upcoming town council meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right. And then, anything else?
I have one other, and this is just an information kind of piece. Picked up over the weekend, there's some chatter on Facebook about water rates doubling and people's bills, you know, going up substantially. So I took the liberty to go through. We did do a rate adjustment at the beginning of the budget year. So it took effect into July. And our water rates went from $7 per thousand gallons to $8.50 per thousand. Our sewer went from $3.99 to $6. At the same time, HRSD also did their annual increase, which they went up $1 per thousand gallons from 1107 to 1207. So our average consumer is somewhere between $6,000 and $10,000 gallons every two months. And so for the 8,000 gallon consumer, our rates meant a $28 increase in their bill. For those people, there's some of the ones that I saw on Facebook, I went and checked, and they were like 15,000 gallons of users. So that's $52, almost $53 every two months. So once you add in the HRSD piece of that, again, for 15,000, that's, you know, 67,000 gallons, they're $67 per every two months. Again, that's if their usage stayed the same. Some of the folks that I saw that were having some concerns, their usage went up significantly. We've had a couple that were leaks or the worst, that worse as far as being able to help folks, it's when they've had a period of consistent usage, it goes through the roof for one bellic cycle and it goes back to normal. So something, whether they had a leak or, let's say, sometimes it's they fill the pool and they know exactly where it went. Other times, you know, somebody left a water who was on and it didn't get caught. So things like that, I don't have really any mechanisms to help them with their bills. But if they have a leak and they can show proof that they found it and fixed it, we have abilities to help folks with their bills. But I just wanted to be able to mention that in case you hear it in the public. Our rates did go up, but it's nothing that would have caused anybody's bills to double or triple. Those are probably one-offs where their usage went up at the same time.
And, Mr. Chairman, to that point, I think a lot of people missed the point that if they have had a child, for example, at college for X number of months, and then they come back home after they have been gone, that individual does use water. I can speak to that point with definiteness, believe me. So there are a lot of variables in that mix that may need to be taken into consideration before it... And the other side of it, I don't know if you look, I mean, the county's water is more expensive than ours. And I don't know if we, these folks are differentiating between the county water bill and town water bill as well. So it could be that, it could be, this could be a number of things. So I applaud Michael for going in there and digging and getting the cart before the horse on this one force and giving us a, you know, a little bit of preemptive information because I saw the same thing. I appreciate the update. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody who's had their water meter replaced within the last couple of years, we have the capacity to go pull data from those. And so I can look at a bar chart and tell you very much the day that the consumption started, the day it stopped.
Well, you, back to your, you remember, we had one of those before us not too long ago where it went like this and went all the way up like this, then went down like that. And it's never gone back up to here. So, you know.
So just wanted, in case anybody asks, you know, so you got some of that information?
Well, thank you, Councilman Bowman, for sharing that firsthand knowledge there. And Town Manager for providing that clarification. I know we have some very savvy citizens that watch these meetings. And hopefully, that'll get circulated around as some clarification. We'd just like to touch on two more points. So Bravo for my committee would be, just, I just want to give, let everybody know, there is a special planning committee meeting tomorrow night. It wasn't on the Friday news, and it's not on this agenda, but there will be a special planning committee meeting tomorrow night at 6:30. You're all invited to join us. Would love to see you there. And for Charlie, I just wanted to initiate a discussion on, I want to start a discussion amongst us with an idea as far as, you know, we've had some, I just want to say some, you know, a couple of challenging weeks, maybe. And I think we still have some work to do. And I think there's a way for us to get started on this. And I started thinking about things from a, from an, I'm trying to think from a high level. So I just want to throw a couple of ideas out there. And I hope that we can then put this on an upcoming agenda to iron out something, whether it's the idea I'm going to propose or something to get us moving, get some action going, and then keep it on the agenda for a while to make some, make a difference. So I would like, Mr. Mayor, for us to consider, it could be called anything, but I'm thinking of something like a leadership and modernization committee. And this would be to address some recent issues and identify staff needs and avoid, hopefully, some future issues. I kind of lean back to some experiences that I had during a, you know, a difficult time on the TR during COVID. And, you know, the ship kind of froze with some lack of action. And I think we need to, I think we need to take, we owe some action and we need to take some action. And I think when I've looked at this, you know, whether we look at our contracting issues or we look at the evaluations or we look at the task issue that I gave to the Town Manager, you know, the tasks, we were supposed to cover these here. We're not really doing that. We're not, we're following through on the closed session procedure, which I think is fantastic. Thank you, Town Manager, for that. But I think we have, I just think we can do some better things. So I looked at three areas or thought about three areas. So the first was personnel. I think it's really important that we look at these last few months and think, are we appropriately invested in our personnel? Spoke with HR Director, you know, and the Town Manager. And an interesting thing, I learned that the city of Chesapeake, you know, they have a goal. They're going to be the number three city, I guess, in tidewater for places for people to work. I guess it's pay. I'm not sure exactly how they arrive at that, but that's a goal that they have set. So, you know, we have what I think of as this shiny, very beautiful town that we preserve and we come in here every month and we fight for to preserve it. And we have a staff that does all the work that we direct them to do. And the town's kind of grown a little bit over the last few decades. And, you know, maybe there's some areas of growth that our town hasn't kept up with and maybe our personnel's one piece. Just something off the top of my mind, it occurs to me that an assistant Town Manager or an executive assistant to the Town Council may be appropriate. You know, someone that can handle some of these responsibilities that we don't have professionals for and we don't have a need for a full-time for, for like a contracting and procurement person or a safety person. These are complex duties that require high levels of attention to detail, but we don't necessarily have a need for a singular person. So maybe if we had a person, because our directors do have singular jobs, you know, our HR Director does have a very specific job. Or, you know, if you recall from the job descriptions of the Town Manager and the Clerk and the Treasurer, that they have very specific duties. And then if we're making them do 16 other things as well, then it kind of dilutes. It has the potential, I should say, to interfere with the primary duty that they're trying to do. I would also say, one thing we should look at is one-time upgrades or one-time-ish, right? Generally, things exist with some type of subscription service. But we addressed some software issues recently with the Munis software. But there's perhaps some other software, ancient software that we're using or other needs that our employees have that will improve efficiency and allow them to do some of these multiple hats, you know, effectively. So I think that that's another area that we should look at is one-time investments that we can do in our town to improve the work environment for our staff. And what I mean is the tools that they execute the job that we entrust them to do. And then finally, I think CIP projects in the town and having a town hall. I think that having our leadership all under one roof is important. We certainly have to have some distribution of our large number of employees, but getting our leadership under one roof, whether, you know, regardless of how we make that happen. But advancing that as a goal of this council, I think, would be appropriate. And so just as I kind of thought through some of these things, you know, assistant Town Manager, you know, that person could be a safety officer and a procurement officer and handle the tasks that come out of here. You know, Town Manager has to manage everyone and every task that doesn't fall into the right basket. And, you know, even if we assign him a task here, and then that's just plopped on top of everything that he has. So if we, we may have a need for one or two more personnel or three, but an assessment needs to be made. And then even outside the box ideas, you know, we could have, it would give us an opportunity to think about things. You know, when I talked with the Town Manager, you know, there was a locality that did a four-day work week, right? We can't be the number three employer. We can't compete with Chesapeake. But what other things could we do that enhances our town staff, keeps our people, and also addresses the process problems that we have? I think we should look into those. Some of those things, you know, I would like to see us be, set some sort of goal that we can work towards as a council and a staff that would set us apart and make us the best place to work. Whether we were number one small locality in Virginia, right? Number one locality under 10,000 people as far as how we take care of our benefits and what we provide to our employers. And is there, is there a process in place in the state for us to, for us to make that distinction of ourselves? Or can we be the number one small locality under 10,000 people south of Richmond? You know, maybe we can't compete with Northern Virginia, but, or at least, you know, we talked about at our retreat as being the jewel of southwest, I'm sorry, southeast Virginia, you know, that if we were going to be that small town, maybe we should, you know, be the best employer in that region as well. Or there's an award out there, right? We have certifications. Chief Hal goes over them occasionally, that we do certifications with our police department. We do those because it gives us a set of standards to, I think that's why we do them other than making our community great. But it gives us a set of standards to compare ourselves against. And so we achieve those standards. And then we take that accolade and we say to our citizens, you're safer because of this. Our community is better because of this. And we could go a step farther and say, we did this for our staff and look at how we addressed some problems that we had and look how we improved it through our staff and a number of other solutions. You know, again, that's just an idea. But I'm, so I recommend that we form some sort of committee, Mr. Mayor. Not today, I think it's just something to chew on. I would suggest a committee. I would love to be involved in it. I think Councilman Bowman has a wealth of leadership experience at all levels of government. I have a little bit of federal experience. I think the Town Manager should be a part of it. The HR Director should certainly be a part of it. I would recommend a non-management senior employee, someone that's been with the town for some time that's not in a management function. And then maybe we have meetings with the different directors. And maybe we need an hourly, you know, lower-level employee in those specific meetings. I think the HR Director in the committee could probably come up with great ideas to do this. But I just want to initiate some thoughts on moving forward and making some corrective actions for, just for a number of things and really just better improving our staff coming out of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have for Water and Sewer Committee. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Finance Chair, Mr. Brooks.
Yes, sir. This time, I'd like to open the Finance Committee along with Councilman Harrison, Councilwoman Butler, and Laura Ross, who's absent, our Treasurer. I guess Leslie, are you taking this?
Al.
Or Michael?
No, Michael.
I can take a stab at it.
I was just going to touch base. Laura provided some comments and a high-level overview of the previous month. If there's any questions with any of her specific points, then I'll do my best to try to answer them or get you answers to your questions. Since she covered the financial statements as well as cash balances, so again, if there's questions that she didn't address or that you have for me, I'd be glad to take them down and get you some answers if you need them.
Anybody have any questions? Real quickly, I'll just add in that you're going to see the tab or a couple of tabs, sales tax distribution, county tax distribution. I'd gone back to, or I'd gone to Michael a couple of weeks ago and just asked him for like a generic cheat sheet. Hey, list out all the taxes that we pay here. What part is the counties? What part is the towns? You know, from business license to motor vehicle to real estate to personal property to everything, just because, you know, occasionally, we get asked a question about a tax. And I know all the information, but I don't have just like a quick cheat sheet. So that's where that came from. It wasn't that there was an issue that we need to look at. She was just providing that as a follow-up to a question that I had had. And quite honestly, if you have any questions about it and you want to see me afterwards, I'm happy to talk to you about it. But it really makes it nice and simple because we have, we do have a lot of fees that people pay. Anybody have any question whatsoever regarding that? Okay? Hearing none, I will go on to some invoices that we need to forward for approval. One for, to the Blair Brothers for four different street projects, paving and patchwork for $120,240. And then our yearly tourism true-up, $304,504.59. Anybody have any questions about those two? All right, we'll forward those on to our next meeting, and that concludes...
Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions on the tourism.
Yeah.
Being a relative newbie, the first time seeing some of the line items.
My first question is, of your total budget, how much does the county contribute? What are the percentages of our contribution in the...
Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty even across the board. On all these numbers, you would receive the same amount from?
But just the tourism numbers?
Right.
And just as a reminder, the way it's set up is we fifty-fifty fund tourism and museum as well. Tourism employees are county employees, museum employees are ours.
Right. The museum, that's 100%, right? When you say ours.
Right. Well, we split-fund that with the county, too. So we send them a bill at the end of the year for 50% of the operational cost.
And how many full-time positions do we have now in...
In tourism?
Yeah.
Four?
Four now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Sir?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The line item for lease rental buildings, $34,084, is that just for the building there on Main Street?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you have a storage unit anywhere, too?
You don't pay it, that's a...
Okay, that's what I thought.
The PD graciously allows us.
But yes, so that's...
Need to charge them rent, chief.
All right, well, that concludes Finance. Thank you.
At this time, we have no report from Parks and Recreation Committee. We have none for Public Works Committee. Public Building and Welfare, Ms. Bowman?
I think that's got enough of the other two. Public Buildings and Welfare Committee with myself as chair, Vice Mayor Harris, and Councilman Cutler. The A on the agenda, Tammy, I think most of these are yours. Special use permit, short-term rental, 139, Texas Court. I guess this is up for discussion based on the last conversation that we had.
I think there's two parts to this. The first is, included in your packet, I'd been asked to go do some research on short-term rentals. You will see a overview of the various localities that I reviewed. I will say that I had reached out to the city of Suffolk and they hadn't responded until late Friday. Their answer is, they don't permit them.
That's correct.
Which, he said, he was sure they exist and they're out there. They just, but what that means is if you've got a room in your house and you want to rent it out, that's, you can do that. It's the dedicated short-term rentals, they do not permit them. But we reviewed these other localities and provided some information in here about those. There were only two that currently do a limitation. Virginia Beach and Hampton. Hampton, I don't know how they managed this. They have 51 different districts. And in those districts, you can have 1% of all residential dwellings as short-term rentals. So that means they have to manage that in every one of those districts. Now, they have a table in their ordinance that breaks all that out for them. And then they, on their website, they mention which ones are at capacity and you can get on a waiting list. Virginia Beach only has a limitation in the oceanfront, and you have to go get a conditional use permit. So that was how they handled them. Some other places were all over the place. Some places, again, you had the primary residents be in, you know, be there for you to be able to rent a room out. Some only allowed one in, one short-term rental per property unit or some by five. So it was a wide range of different approaches to how they handled them. But this will hopefully give you some synopsis of how those folks did it. Also provided the different ordinances so you can review those if you wanted to. Only ask that would be is, let's not do what Hampton does because there's no way we could manage that. But this gives you some insight into what other localities are doing.
Do we have a list of all short-term rental units that we have in the town?
So there's four that have been approved by the SUP to operate primarily as a short-term rental. It's 111 Institute Street, 205 Chalmers Row, 233 South Mason Street, and 328 Main Street.
Well, I do have a question that we're discussing short-term rentals. I guess, do we want to set a limit? And if we do set a limit, will there be a limit, well, two categories? One for in the historic district and outside of the historic district?
That's going to be a council question. And the only thing I would say is, if you wanted to do a limitation, and it sounds like there's been some interest in potentially looking at that in downtown, based off of what Virginia Beach did, some sort of overlay may be the way to do that, to where you put some, you know, create a downtown overlay and that's it. I don't see that there's going to be a huge proliferation out in normal residential neighborhoods. It just doesn't, there's not a draw for them. It just doesn't, there's not a draw for that. The folks who are looking for them want to come and be in the downtown for obvious reasons. But if you were going to look at something, I would want to make sure it's something that's easy to manage and is specific about what you're trying to accomplish.
And I would think that, well, I don't know. I would have think that HOA would cover that in a neighborhood, in a community.
Right. And HOA's regulations would be on top of whatever the town said.
Okay.
Councilman Bowman, I have a few, or Councilman Butler, I have a few thoughts.
Okay.
I like the, your conclusion, if you wish to produce some type of limitation, overlay district may be the most manageable. I like that thought, too. And I think this is an opportunity for the council, if it's appropriate, I think, to send this to the Planning Commission and ask them to put together a draft zoning ordinance or overlay ordinance. Because there's, you know, this also comes through them, and there's still a lot of discussion with them about this. I would also say, you know, we could give them some guidance on that. I like some parts of what Hampton did, and I think a limitation, I would recommend that we go stricter rather than more lenient. And then if we find over time, as the town manager said, it'll take some time for these to proliferate. But if we start with a real lenient policy, then we may not catch something alarming in time. But one thing, one thing I made a note of that I just wanted to share as an idea as we do this, a couple of other things that I thought were good was, was one, a percent limit. I think that's a good idea. Inspections for zoning compliance, I thought, was something we should think about because, at least upon initial inspection, especially in the historic district, that we verify that, you know, if they're renting out homes in our community, that they're homes that represent our community well and meet all our zoning requirements and overlay district requirements. So I think we should make sure we account for zoning compliance inspections as well as, you know, the town reserving the right to do re-inspections when they renew their And then, just something to think about that we maybe could use and leverage in this is the, we had, Mr. Keaton was, spoke against a SUP for short-term rental in Redpoint Heights, and there was some discussion around that as far as going to outage workers. And then I've just had a few chat with some outage workers locally, and it seems that that's a category of people when we talk about lodging in the community that we're missing. And there's really not a lot of lodging between here and the power plant. But what I've observed is those folks tend to come to Smithfield to eat and shop and spend their money. If somewhere in this, we made some exceptions to, for outage workers in this, it may be, it might be something enhancing for the town or for residents of the town that have that capability to have a space in their home for those workers.
I got a question, Darren. You're recommending that it goes back to the Planning Commission, they set up a criteria for short-term rental. The one that's specifically listed on here, the Planning Commission approved that, and we denied it.
We didn't deny it, we...
Delayed it, I'm sorry, we delayed it. But Planning did approve that.
Yeah, they recommended approval, and I think that this one, I think we delayed this one to have a discussion about a policy. But I think that, you know, we could probably move forward with this specific unit, but, you know, it gave us a, it kind of triggered us to talk about developing a policy. And if we, if we, if appropriate, to send it back to the Planning Commission to develop a overlay district or whatever mechanism. So we're, so this council, so this body's not starting nor planning, I suppose, Ms. Clary would probably have to start from scratch and then get a shell to them and then, you know, but we could give some guidance.
So are we sending this request back?
No, I would argue, and the attorney may be able to comment, I think to create new restrictions after she's already applied, I don't know the, I think you have to deal with that one and then deal with the new restrictions.
I agree with that, Michael, but when I asked that, we were emphatic about delaying her request until we had this discussion.
And to the sending it back to Planning Commission, I would ask that you do that with specific guidance, because what you have on the books today is what Planning Commission crafted. So if you want something different than that, you need to be very specific, because after much work, that's what they came up with. So I would just ask you, if you're going to do that, give them specific guidance.
Councilman?
Yes, Jeff.
All right. I've put a lot of research and time and issue into this quite a bit. And I've, at this point, decided not to take on our current policy at all. But I may. We have a very lax system when it comes to these. You can rate your place out up to 104 days. There's no regulation on owner occupied. So our rules right now, as they exist, are very favorable to somebody that wants to get into this. However, we do have an application in front of us that we need to vote on. I have spoken to one residence of Sykes Avenue who is adamantly opposed to this, citing very tight parking, well, you heard her, the parking restrictions, the, it is a dead end, all sorts of other things. In addition, I have been trying to track down another fellow that lives on that street who is also opposed to it. We keep missing each other. So I haven't been able to catch up with him. So given the nature of the neighbors' opposition to this specific one, this one is not going to garner my support. But I do believe that we need to take action on it with some, maybe instruction on looking into how our policy currently is. I do think that if we don't, then we can continue to do what we're doing now and just have them keep popping up and then looking at each one. And maybe that's the way the council wants to go. I don't think that's the way we want to go. But I, but I think taking on the policy as it is right now is probably foolish, and we just need to make a decision on this one and then figure out the path that we want to go down. So, thank you, Valerie.
I tend to agree with Mr. Brooks. I don't, this one's been hung in the vortex for a while, and I think that we need to make a decision one way or the other as we proceed down the path of what we're going to do as far as any modifications are concerned. But to hold this one right here for an extended period of time, I don't think is appropriate. So I would, I would hope that we would move it to...
Mrs. Butler, if I may.
Yes, Vice Mayor Harris.
I just want to concur agreeing back, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Bowman, on that. We need to make a decision on this one, and what Darren is saying is, you know, something we've been banding about on lots of things, you know, with previous meetings, type thing. We need to start putting things down so that we're moving forward, not stagnating and not moving back. As to this particular application, I am opposed. I was opposed in the earliest discussions, mostly because of the points Jeff just made it as a neighborhood breaker. I did endorse some ones on Main Street and on Institute, whole different thing, those are commercial areas. And when we get around to drafting a new overlay, those would be my concerns again. But for the one that's before us now, I will be voting no.
Any more conversation? If not, we will move this forward to Town Council Meeting for Action.
For clarification, are we talking about moving 139 Sykes to council for action? And then council is going to come back to the short-term rental?
For further discussion.
On the next committee meeting, or where would you like that placed?
Well, based on the conversations that I just heard, it sounds like Jeff is opposed to making any decisions about current ordinance based on the request that we have. But it sounds like we want to have a conversation and put something in order going forward with short-term rentals.
Okay, so would you like that placed on next committees, so that you can have a discussion on it?
Next committee, yes.
Okay.
B is conditional rezoning and special use permits for Sheets.
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning to highway retail commercial. This would be for the construction of a convenience store with fueling station islands, and then two, potentially three additional retail users. These uses are in line with the future land use map. The staff report outlines what the feature will be, along with the drive-through, the 24 hours a day, seven days per week with the site access. The first special use permit is for the drive-through facility for the Sheet. The second special use permit is for the waiver of parking and loading. This is to exceed the maximum number of parking spaces by seven spaces, providing up to 44 spaces instead of the maximum 37 spaces. The third special use permit is for a service station. This is to utilize one parcel of a 5,500-square-foot oil express facility. Again, this was tabled while they awaited comments from VDOT. VDOT has provided its approval letter with that accompanying conceptual plan. This is for potential modifications in the interim of the updates that are happening at that intersection. If the updates to the intersection don't happen before the Sheets come live, there will be that channelized right turn coming off of Turner onto Ben's Church Boulevard, which would then be reconfigured once those updates to the intersection occur. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bowman?
As I recall, the only real issue that gave me heartburn, or I think gave a lot of the council heartburn, was the, was the response from VDOT or lack thereof. It sounds to me, after reading and seeing everything that Ms. Clary has indicated to us, not only did they come back with some type of clarification, but even made contingency plans. So that was, was, the only thing was concerning me about what was before us at that time.
Any other comments about this particular request?
I'd just like to echo Councilman Bowman. When I read through the thing, seemed like they came to those things. And then one question for Tammy. Oil express facility?
Yes, sir.
Is that like a Jiffy Lube?
They, they weren't specific on what it would be. They just defined it.
Was that sort of a generic setup for that? Thank you.
Well, and I had a question around that, too. Will that be in a separate building?
Yes.
The, oh, okay. But it's not necessarily owned by Sheets. It's another commercial business?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I have a question about that. So right now, there are three parcels there. Sheets would be one, this oil would be another one, correct?
So right now, there's, it's one parcel, they have not subdivided. They are proposing the Sheets, they are proposing the express oil facility, and then potentially maybe one or two other users. They just have not identified them at this point in time.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I wanted to clarify, is that there were, I know there were multiple uses for that area, but, okay, thank you.
Councilman Butler, I have a question and a comment. Ms. Clary, the letter crashes every time, and I think it's because the letter is really tiny and then the drawings are really large, and it's trying to auto-zoom. And that's just FYI, because we have so many documents that go on this, maybe that might be part of the problem. But the last paragraph, if it'll stay up long enough...
Sure.
And I just, I want to make sure we under, or I understand this. To reiterate, there are no improvements proposed to northbound Route 10 left turn on the Turner Drive or eastbound existing Turner Drive approaches to mitigate the delay in the interim. Such improvement may include... This is how I read the letter before. Such improvement may include convert the eastbound approach to the intersection to an exclusive left, channelized right, yada, yada. So it just wasn't clear to me. No improvements have been proposed, but it sounds like improvements are needed. Is that, is that true?
So they're only needed if the Sheets come online before the improvements to that intersection. What they did proffer was that they would do anything that VDOT required them to do. So the conceptual plan that you see there shows that channelized right coming off of Turner, which is what VDOT asked them to do. They didn't know, they couldn't proffer what they didn't know, and so they proffered a generic statement saying that they would address VDOT's comments.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
I got a question. I know it's come up several times with the two auto stores being side-by-side, and I know on Canterbury Lane, there is an express oil service there. Are we putting any criteria on the types of commercial properties that we'd like to see along that route?
We have generally let the market dictate that. I'm not aware of anything other than the uses that are specified in the highway commercial zoning. I mean, you could argue that that's a list of preferred businesses along the commercial corridor. But as far as going after and targeting specific businesses, no, ma'am, generally the market has done that.
So it could happen again. Same types of businesses could be located adjacent to one another?
Yes, ma'am, if the market dictated that that was something that made sense to the investors, yes, it could.
In this particular instance for the Sheets, they did proffer that they, their proposed uses would come back to Planning Commission for review.
But I'm not sure that the Planning Commission could, or should. I mean, you go down Route 17 in Suffolk, you've got two 7-11s across the street from each other, literally across the street from each other, and literally do a wonderful business. I just don't know, from a legal perspective, if you want to get into the weeds when you start trying to do that. Although, I don't like the idea that...
Well, and I only brought it up because I hear Dr. Pope saying it all the time, that it looks like that could have possibly been a mistake that we made, because we didn't set, I guess, criteria for that zoning. Since you've been on the planning, have you heard that conversation?
Yes, Councilman Butler, and I thought that it was this one, that we had a condition of some nature that we were putting in there that would prevent mirroring business types, or is it across the street with the promontory where we discussed that?
No, it was this project, it was just that the usage would come back to Planning Commission for review.
But realistically, would they be denied?
I think the question is, can they be denied?
Yeah.
Well, we've got an attorney here, I'd like to ask the question. Sir, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If two competing oil change companies decided to set up shop side-by-side on the same, on adjoining piece of property, what authority would the town have or not have as far as either now or in the future could adopt some type of ordinance, rationale, guidelines? Well, not guidelines, but could we prevent, just to cut to the chase, that from occurring?
If I can include into that statement, the proffers state that submittals will be made to Planning Commission for review and approval of other proposed uses of the property, if any.
So, yeah, that's a, and that's a good distinction. Do we have, how can we be involved in that process on one specific parcel? And I agree that on the property itself, if you want additional control over future uses, the proper would be a good way to do that. You're contemplating the future use, you're addressing it in the proper statement. Otherwise, more generally, to your point about two oil change, not wanting, two oil change businesses next door to each other, or two 7-11s across the street from each other. You know, most commonly, that's addressed through the specially used permit, special exception permit process. You make that use a specially used or special exception permit use. So that, as part of your deliberations in deciding whether or not to grant the use, you could consider the existence of nearby businesses. So if you have, you know, if oil change business is a special exception use in the town, and someone comes in, applies for a special exception, and it's granted, that's fine. It's built, and then someone comes in later and says, I'd like to also build an oil change business across the street. I think it is a reasonable consideration for any company body to say, "Well, we already have that use right here. We're not sure why we would want to authorize another one." That is traditionally how that would be governed. I know that, you know, there are other market forces, which I think that the town manager mentioned, that the town wouldn't be involved in. But sometimes, when you have developments, large shopping malls or things like that, leases will state that, you know, there can't be other similar tenants in the development. But that's not a zoning issue. That's a private contract issue. So, for the town to manage that, you'd be looking at the zoning ordinance. And the special exception process is typically how you would control the proximity of one use to another.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, then, to answer that question, then, we don't have that protection currently on that property? Is that... If someone were to come for that same use, would we have that protection at this time?
According to the proffers, Planning Commission would have to review and approve of any proposed uses.
No, but I'm asking if, without the proffer, does our zoning already provide that protection? Doesn't sound like it does.
No, we have by right permitted uses in the HRC.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this project?
Yes, Councilwoman Butler, I would just... If we can get the proffer document added for the public hearing, I think that would... might clear up some of that.
We've already had the public hearing for the Sheets.
Well, for the vote, then.
Pardon me, Darren. What did you say?
The proffer document. If it was included with this, it just might answer the question, so... But it might be of interesting review to us to review it prior to the vote.
Any other discussion? So, it sounds like in HRC, commercial properties are by right, unless it's written in their proffers.
We have 29 items approximately. One was repealed. So, 28 items that are by right in the highway retail.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, this will be passed on to Town Council meeting for further action. C is a pre-public hearing discussion, text amendment, landscaping, Smithfield zoning ordinance. Article nine.
Yes, thank you. This is a proposed text amendment to Article nine, C2E. This would be removing the requirement for tree canopies on platted lots. This would be in accordance with State Code 15 dot 2 dash 961. Therefore, our language in our zoning ordinance would then mirror the language that is provided in State Code. This was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Any comments? That seemed to be pretty self-explanatory. We will move this to Town Council for a public hearing. D, pre-public hearing discussion, text amendment, attached residential, Smithfield zoning ordinance, Article three, dot E.
Yes, so this is... The next two items are very similar. One is just for the attached residential. The other one is for the multifamily residential. This would be removing the requirement to provide recreational vehicle parking in Section I-2B and making it a special use permit requirement in Section C-2. This would also allow public and private travel ways in Section I. Per the Planning Commission's recommendation, the requirement for contiguous open space still remains in Section G-5. Again, this was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Any comments? We're moving on to a public hearing at the next Town Council meeting. E, Tammy.
Yes, this is for Article three F. Again, just like previously, this is making recreational vehicle parking in Section I-2B and SUP in Section C. And then also allowing public and private travel ways in Section I. Again, per the Planning Commission's recommendation, the requirement for contiguous open space still remains in Section G. It was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
We'll move this to Town Council for a public hearing. I don't know how I got assigned this, but I did read it. It said amend town code to repeal Section 70 dash 223, registration fees for use of Windsor Castle Park Dog Park. And it seems as though we're deleting all registration fees. Can I ask why?
We have not been doing dog park registrations for several years now. And he's not in here to tell me for how long. It got overwhelming to manage, and people weren't getting them. And then, unless you had somebody out here all the time leasing it, it just became unmanageable. And so, we stopped charging them. So, this is just removing it from the ordinance to clean it up and make practices match the ordinance.
Well, but the rationale when it first started, if I'm correct, was good rationale. What it was, it wasn't so much about the fee to do it. What it was, the fee was the mechanism to ensure that when you came in to register your animal, they also had to provide the rabies certificate as well to ensure that the dog was protected and wasn't getting in there with other animals. I remember specifically when this first came out. So, the rationale was good, but I understand the control is maybe a little unwieldy. But just... It's just not... A lot of people say, "Well, that's just another fee." That's just... No, the rationale was very, 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 very good when it first came out and...
But unless you have somebody there all the time monitoring, you can't enforce it.
You know, one side was registration-based, and one side was not. And people were giving the code out, and so, it just wasn't... There was no way to manage it.
Road to hell is paved with good intentions. How about that? Right.
Councilwoman Butler, I have a question. Thank you. Is there a mechanism, and maybe, you know, Councilman Bowman or Town Manager or Chief Howell, you know, is there a mechanism? I understand it's the law in Virginia, pets have to be... Have rabies shots every one year or three years, spend on the shot. So, what is the penalty? Maybe we could address the concerns that were valid then with a sign, you know?
I mean, technically, if you have an animal in Alawak County, you're supposed to have the animal... I mean, so, there's already stuff on the books that you were supposed to have your cat, dog registered. And it's a matter of, you know, the same thing with enforcement.
And the county handles it. What you do, yeah. What happens is you go get your dog a rabies shot.
Right.
Then you get a certificate. You go out there, and you're supposed to have a dog license or a cat license or whatever, and go from there.
Understand all that part, but, you know, in the interest of not, you know, running an HOA dog park, you know, if there's already a law on the books, maybe a sign there that would say, "Your dog must have rabies shots per law X, or you will be fined per that law if that exists." I'm just saying, maybe there's already a mechanism there that we can make a sign for. And if we wound up having to enforce something, that law would already be advertised. It would already be posted there. And then, it would just make it a little cleaner, maybe. I'm not sure.
I'm not going to give the Chief Howell's, but I could maybe help a little bit based on past experience. Those animal control laws are enforced by the county. And the animal control officers have to be certified as animal control officers. A police officer in and of himself is not an ex officio, like it would be a game warden or something like that. But they have to have the special... That's the only real mechanism for enforcing, make sure they've got rabies.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that Smithfield PD would enforce it. Just if there was a valid concern and we're wiping this out of our rule books, maybe a simple sign reminding people that your pet must have a rabies vaccination. Well, I mean, we had to write an ordinance to do it, to get people to bring the... I mean, I don't know. There was... I wasn't here for this.
A sign would be a good thing. I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, but how would you monitor that?
Well, you don't... We wouldn't. It's just purely advisory in nature, for lack of a better term.
And it seems like we attempted a really restrictive effort. When I moved here and I read this, I was like, "Oh, that seems a little weird." I moved into an HOA. You know, especially that there were two different areas, you know? So, it was a little confusing, to say the least, but there's already a law. So, I mean, it would be just fine and just the same without a sign. But if there was a reason that citizens had that we passed this law and they were taking off the books, maybe there's a middle ground. That's all I was suggesting.
And I think if you have a dog, a pet, and you're taking it over there, you want to know whether or not the next person's dog has had the proper shots. But I guess we haven't had any complaints or people questioning that.
Well, even a sign might be the reminder some people need. I mean...
There you go. I think we ought to put a sign up.
But are we still going to take it off the books?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move this to Town Council to vote on it. Amend town code yard sign permits.
I'll take this one. We received a complaint from a resident about a neighbor having multiple yard sales without the appropriate permits. So, we took a look at the ordinance, gathered together, Police Department, Treasurer's Office, Planning and Zoning. And we all met together and said, "What makes sense?" Currently, our ordinance is a Class one misdemeanor, which means $250 and go to jail, $2,500 and go to jail for a year. So, we thought that might be a tad excessive. So, you know, the resident's complaint is valid because we have something on the books that limits you to two yard sales per year. And each of those can only be two days. So, if it's on the books, we've got to enforce it. And we started looking at what made sense. And the first thing that made sense was to get rid of that. Let's make it something where it's a much more manageable and appropriate fines. We settled on $10 and subsequent violations being a Class four misdemeanor. And the real issue with this is not the people who are having yard sales, it's the people who have the perpetual yard sales. And in this specific incident, the neighbor was having a perpetual yard sale. The people were parking in the neighbor's yard, tearing the neighbor's yard up. And, I mean, again, that's an issue, and that's what this is meant to address. So, we did go through the process, again, with the Treasurer's Office, Planning and Zoning, Police Department. And this is what we landed on, is something that's reasonable and enforceable. And so, if there's questions, we'd be glad to answer them. You know, we're all here to be able to help with that. Otherwise, our recommendation is that we make the changes within the recommendation here.
Is there a license for yard sale?
You are required... You have to come get a yard sale permit.
Who monitors that?
It's a combination of the Treasurer's Office, Plan Department, and the Police Department.
Okay. Question. Had this person's neighbor not complained, and she's having continuous yard sales, does she get... Is it a yard sale license per sale?
It is.
Or is it...
Each property can have two yard sales a year that can last two days apiece.
Okay, did we know that she was having continuous...
It was buried in a neighborhood that, you know, unless you happen to ride by there on a Saturday, no.
See, I have a concern about us having things on the books. And nobody monitors them.
We have... We worked on that. And so, we've got a process in place where the... Because the Treasurer's Office is who handles the permit.
Okay.
So, they're tracking it. They'll provide it to the Police Department. Officers on the weekend will know who has and who doesn't have yard sales. And if they ride by one that doesn't, it's a matter of, "Hey, you're supposed to have a permit. You know, please come into town hall and take care of it." And so, it's not going to be, we come in, put somebody in handcuffs, and haul them to jail. That's just not reasonable. But it gives us the way to deal with these issues where, again, it is a neighborhood issue if somebody's doing it every weekend and is generating a ton of traffic.
Yeah, in that case, you may not put them in handcuffs, but they ought to get a summons.
Well, and if... Right. If it's multiple times, then we get to a point where we're starting to be able to...
That's to Ms. Butler's point. You got it on the books. And you haven't... Apparently, there's this one person that's having this... That one person isn't that hard to track. That one person, you know what's going on. And you go and you issue them a summons. And then after a couple summons, it's the judge, you know? What you need to do, I don't know if this... I didn't look very closely at it, but is it a violation for multiple offenses? Does it increase every...
The first one's 10, and after that is a misdemeanor, Class four.
Which is now $250? I can't remember. $250. Okay. Not much.
Okay. Any other discussions around yard...
Beat that all day long.
Yard sale permits? We'll move it along to vote on it. H, discussion item, proposed fee schedule for Planning Department.
Yes, just for clarity, staff would like to include some additional fee schedules for a demolition fee of $30, a zoning permit for a new single-family dwelling, $75, preliminary plat, $150. Proffer amendment would be free unless it requires a public hearing, at which point it would be a $400 fee. The rezoning for our planned mixed-use district would be $1,000 plus $45 per lot or unit. And then additionally, modifying our site plan for commercial, instead of $50 per 1,000 square feet, it would be $500 per acre in addition to that $300.
Any discussion around the new fees?
Mrs. Butler, I have a question. Tammy, how are our fees in line with surrounding jurisdictions?
So, this is not changing our fees. Right now, we currently charge $75 for the zoning permit for the new single-family dwelling. We just wanted to kind of specify...
I understand that. Are we in line with other jurisdictions? How does that work?
We're much lower. It has always been kind of cover the cost of advertising, and that's it.
Thank you.
So, what's the purpose of doing this?
The only fee that we're changing officially is the site plan review for that commercial. That's changing from $50 per 1,000 square feet to $500 per acre because we do look at the entirety of the lot, not just the building. And if we did $1,000, $50 per 1,000 square feet, that would be quite a large fee, upwards of $30,000, which is a bit excessive. We also wanted to clarify the rezoning to the PMUD and have that because right now, we kind of address rezoning residential and rezoning commercial. And we wanted to spell out the rezoning to the PMUD since it's a mix of both residential and commercial. And then the proffer amendment, since we have changed the proffer language to now allow that proffer amendment to come back to Town Council. If it does not affect use or density, then it just comes back to Council without that public hearing, and so, that would be free. However, if we do have to advertise for a proffer amendment, there's that $400 fee.
Okay, so, there are some updated fees?
Yes.
Okay.
New fees, I should say. New fees and the updated fees.
Well, back to the question that Vice Mayor Harris had. How long have these been this amount until today?
I'm not... It's probably been a while. The last fee that I... Fee adjustment I brought back was for special use permits because I believe we were charging $250-ish or $200. That wouldn't even cover the cost of the advertising. And so, the... It was probably about two years ago that I came back and asked for that $400 for the special use permit, again, just to cover the cost of advertising. I don't believe we adjusted any of the other fees.
Why didn't we adjust any other fees?
Again...
Because we were dealing with a particular fee at that time, and we only reviewed that one.
Correct.
I think we may consider looking at other fees to at least... How do we know that they're just covering the costs?
So, we did an analysis across several localities when we did that special use permit. It's difficult because not all localities charge the fees as a flat fee. Some charge it per square footage. Some charge it, you know, the square footage of the house affects the building permit fee. And so, you're not exactly comparing apples to apples across the localities. We can go back. I know when we had looked, SUPs, you know, potentially at least $1,000, $1,500 for those special use permit applications.
What makes it a little difficult, too, is some of these larger localities do reviews in-house or, you know, have the engineering staff, for example, to do stormwater reviews, things like that, where we farm that out. And then, most of the time, especially on these big developments, they're paying that fee. these big developments, they're paying that fee, too. So, when we send plans out, let's say, to one of our engineers to look at stormwater, when we get the bill, the engineer pays the bill. So, that, and other localities may be done in-house, so they're charging more because they're doing it in-house.
Okay, if we're happy doing it the way we're currently doing it?
Councilwoman Butler, I have a question about this as well.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Thank you. The $400 SUP fee, I mean, that's the same, say, the guy that did SUP for a Conex box as Greenwood Homes paid for SUP for setbacks, correct? Both paid $400 bucks?
Correct.
That, to me, seems like a kind of a nonsensical thing. One, it seems really expensive for our citizen. It's the highest fee that we have other than rezoning costs. You know, when we had the citizen that had the job and the home job, we've since rectified that, but it just seems like a pretty steep cost to file paperwork for a citizen, but then for 209 homes or whatever it was that we approved in that last thing, I know the work, the level of effort of work to get that SUP to the planning commission, briefed here, back and forth, back and forth, you know, over multiple meetings, is much in excess of $400. So, maybe we need a, to, you know, if we're going to do an assessment, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Butler, then that seems as a glaring area that, you know, our citizens are being really disadvantaged, but our developers are really getting, you know, a pretty good deal for as far as the level of effort that our planning staff has to put into presenting an SUP for a developer vice a Conex box.
Well, what I would, if you look at it strictly that way, you're right, but what you have to remember is those developers are paying that rezoning fee on top of the special use permit fee, so they're not just paying $400 for that. All of that extra review was wrapped up in that rezoning fee.
Sure, but rezoning by right would cost them the same thing, too, so I don't think that that's really relevant. It actually doesn't, so you're saying that the rezoning fee then is, I mean, if you're saying that, then you would say the rezoning fee is inflated, because if they're not doing an SUP, we're charging them too much. So, you know, I think the better, you know, different perspective might be that when you have multi-lot SUPs that require multiple, multiple hours of staff time to process, that we should account for that. This goes back to our earlier discussion of, you know, our town planning staff's plate is full, right, and we plop a SUP for 200 homes on their plate that they have to get through probably six different meetings, right, versus the Conex box, so. Just something to think about if we're going to do a reassessment, looking at the impact on our citizens versus the impact in how it affects growth and our bottom line, paying our staff for the volume of work that they're doing for these developers effectively.
Any more discussion? We'll move this text amendment to a public hearing at the next town council meeting. Tammy J.
Item I for Article 11.
I'm sorry, I skipped that one. Okay.
This is a proposed text amendment to Article 11, bringing our site plan requirements in line with Virginia code. They recently replaced the planning commission with the designated agent as the reviewer of site plans. The code also no longer allows for preliminary site plan preconferences. We cleared up the language for minor and major site plans and included the requirement of a preliminary plat if more than 50 lots. We updated the sewer systems with the new language from our adopted CBPA ordinance, and then also updated review timelines. This would be in order to follow Virginia code. Finally, the appeals process was clarified to the Board of Zoning Appeals, not the Planning Commission. These revisions align the site plan requirements with our current modern zoning practices. J 3B per the Planning Commission will not be limited to only the agencies on the list, and it will also include police, Isle of Wight County Schools, museum, and other utilities. Also, per Planning Commission, remodeling of commercial structures may qualify as a minor site plan if, in the opinion of the zoning administrator, it is in conformance with the intent of this article. Staff is continuing to work on updating the language for the major and minor site plans per Planning Commission's request. This was favorably recommended four to two by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cutler, I know that this designation, there was a lot of discussion on the Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And you and Dr. Pope voted against it.
Yeah, this one, well, one, the text amendment itself is pretty complex, so there's a lot of things going on. This is a whole article, and there's more than one thing going on in it, so it's kind of difficult to navigate. And, that was a really long meeting, but if I recall correctly, so the remodeling of minor site plans, the real sticking point on this, and Dr. Pope, we were fortunate, his experience was a great case study, where he had to make a business decision between a minor and major site plan based on the, really, the exorbitant cost of doing a major site plan versus minor. And so, you know, hence the Juliet three bravo section, I'm sorry, not that, the remodeling of commercial structures section, and give the zoning administrator some leeway to say, this is in the intent of this article. And what we discussed specifically was writing, you know, writing zoning laws that support our comprehensive plan and the goals that we have for the town, and so, if we say that South Church Street, for instance, is, you know, a growing commercial corridor, so to speak, we say that pretty much in our comprehensive plan, then we think, or at least the examples that we have in place are these local owned businesses from Dr. Pope, and then we've seen the Walls Insurance Agency doing improvements, Red Point Tap House. So, we have these examples that are all local businesses that are doing property improvements, and so, it becomes important to us to, I think, and part of the discussion we had, was making sure that we don't create barriers to entry, like Dr. Pope had, to take that facility he has and make it into something that works for the community, and those other structures along South Church Street, that we wouldn't want to do that with those either, so, I guess the too-long-didn't-read version of that would be, just making sure that we don't create barriers to entry for small businesses that are not overcomeable through this ordinance.
I will add, oh, go ahead.
Based on the conversation, how does that relate to what the state code is requiring?
So, staff is still continuing to work on potential modifications to the minor site plan and major site plan. We are in agreement with the Planning Commission that it is not perfect. However, we are operating under the deadline of July 1st with the designated agent, so our main goal was to make sure that the designated agent was clarified in our Article 11. Again, we could make minor tweaks, but the major site plan and the minor site plan is a much larger project than we were able to take on at that moment, and again, it wasn't being pressed by Virginia code.
That's, I have a question about that. We really don't have a choice here. We have to do this. This is state code.
Or the designated agent portion.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Butler, and the council as a whole, one of the things we discussed was in the future, this is a big bite, and the planning staff did an excellent job of this, but it is, it's pretty hard to digest, and there's a few like that, and I think one of the things we talked about as an improvement was, when we have a state mandated change, you know, that we look at that as a single change, because really, that's pretty cut and dry, right? If the state says you're going to do this, there's a Dylan rule, so we just kind of have to do that, but that allows us the ability to kind of digest it really quick, but then when we have, say, three or four, six different changes that are unrelated, and then trying to track and understand unintended consequences becomes difficult, so that process, I think, may improve a little bit, as we discussed, specifically as it relates to the state mandated changes.
So, we'll move this to, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Harris.
Well, it's a pretty confusing, long deal. I understand the part about the state requirement and the nomenclature, and basically, in our situation, changing your title, and you would still be our agent on that. But Section 3.1F, which is page 12, preliminary site plan, plat in blue, requirements for major site plans, and this, not a criticism, just a question, just trying to follow it. There are 24 things that were once required on the major site that are now redlined. So, if that example doesn't work for you, maybe just a general explanation, you know, if these things have been in place all this time and we thought they were important then, how come we've got 24 things, and what's the purpose of that?
So, we actually have a checklist for our preliminary plat, and it's just repeated here in this article. It's duplicated for our checklist, so we just tell them, refer to the subdivision ordinance checklist, and all of those things are in there.
And that's if I had to go on to that, where it kept saying, go back to this particular thing, so.
Yes, sir.
We're not actually eliminating these requirements, we're cleaning up the document.
The only thing that we are eliminating, for example, more so when we get to the final plat, is no longer requiring Mylar documents and floppy disks.
Okay, excellent.
So, just updating technology.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Butler, if I may add to that, if you go to the Planning Commission version of this presentation, it has all the checklists in it, didn't it? So, you can see that those were all added, too, in this process.
We'll move this to town council for the public hearing.
Yes, thank you. This is a proposed text amendment to our subdivision ordinance. This would be Article 2, bringing our general regulations for subdivision requirements in line, again, with Virginia code, which recently replaced the Planning Commission with the designated agent as the reviewer of site plans. Article 3, we updated to include HRPDC and VDOT regulations. Article 4 was updated to the designated agent and included additional authorities for regulations. Article 5 was updated to the designated agent and removed the requirement for a planning conference. We also updated review times and numbers of copies required. Article 6 requires town council to approve private streets, and Article 7 clarifies bonding requirements. Article 8 was repealed, as it is also repeated in Article 11 of the zoning ordinance, which we just looked at. We updated our checklist for preliminary plats, public improvement plans, and final plats, and we incorporated our design standards into our subdivision ordinance as Article 8, as Article 13 was not favored by the Public Works Department. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend this text amendment to town council. Staff have included additional language in our design standards. This would be requiring contractors to notify affected residents of utility disruption 48 hours prior, and then also requirements on meters for fire lines. Thank you.
Any discussions on this text amendment? If not, we'll pass it along for a public hearing. K, discussion item, closed session minutes. And Michael, I guess this is falling under you.
Yes, ma'am. In previous meetings, council has discussed considering taking minutes in closed session. Currently, as you all know, we are doing audio recordings, but we needed to have a conversation around this topic and how best to proceed with this. I did brief the attorney on this, so what you see in the memo, he provided those sections of code, that basically, Virginia Freedom of Information Act says that you may take closed session minutes, but they're not required. And it also says that you shall, they shall not be subject to mandatory disclosure, which means that if somebody asks for them, you do not have to give them out. On the audio recordings piece, again, if it's recorded in closed session, it becomes exempt from FOIA. So, in other words, we would not be required to release that information to the public. So, as I mentioned, we have been doing some audio recordings based off direction of council, and the way we've been handling those is that those files are then taken off of the device, put on the server, and left there. Because if, you know, if we were to have somebody transcribe minutes from that, that would have, that would be a staff person that normally would not be in those meetings having to do that. It may put them in some unique and uncomfortable positions, depending on the topics being discussed. So, this is for discussion amongst council as far as direction to move forward, consultation with the attorney if you have questions for him on this, and then we can go from there.
Discussion?
Councilwoman Butler, I have a question, maybe for the attorney or maybe for the town manager. And I'll say, I think this process has been great so far, and thank you for bringing this. I think ultimately, this whole thing needs to get into our charter, right? I think it's the place where it's going to land, probably, or some type of, some type of.
It would not go in the charter, because that would take in general assembly action.
Okay, yeah.
It may fall in our town code.
Yeah, some type of code. So, anyway, so eventually, it's got to get to some type of code or some type of document, right, that we, you know, that will last for transparency's sake. And I would also want to say that it was helpful to, you know, just to be able to go back and look at conversations that we had that are just lost to time if we don't have these, and I think it's really just injustice to the past that more localities aren't doing this. So, I would say that it sounds like it's a question of, do we write them down or not, right? It sounds like that's what you're proposing, that we just maintain a recorded record, we don't have a typed record.
Well, what I would say is, I think it's first to just get this up, decision for council on whether you do it or don't do it. Beyond that, if you choose to do it, recording it is the only way that I would recommend you do it, but that's if council decides you want to continue doing it. In the research, I have not found another locality that does it, so we would be the first that I'm aware of in Virginia, and I believe the attorney indicated the same thing. So, we would be basically setting the precedent on how to do this in the state of Virginia.
But we have, we've already voted to take minutes.
You have not. You asked us to do it based off the items that were being discussed, so we have been doing that, but there has been no formal vote from council to record closed sessions.
I have a question. How, I think it's a good idea to have the recordings, just so we have some information. I think we've found from over the last couple of weeks and months that going back to something is helpful. How long are these records kept?
That, I don't know.
I mean, is it other, compared to other records? I mean, other records of time?
I don't know the answer to that, because it's a closed session matter. I'm going to have to go look in the records management guidelines to see if there's even a, I don't, I don't know if Mr. McKenzie knows the answer.
You may know, maybe five years, or maybe whatever the other ones are.
But I don't know.
I would default, my baseline assumption would be that under the Public Records Act, they'd be treated like any other, you know, local government records, so seven years. There might be an exception, I doubt it, but I think the subject should be, from a record destruction standpoint, they would need to be maintained, everything you make for seven years, but then you, they are protected from disclosure under those FOIA provisions that are included in the amendment.
Thank you.
So, then to clarify, then, we need to have a motion on the keeping of minutes, but I think what we actually, what this derived from was a direction to create a process to a closed session process that included the recording amendments, right? And so, we need to, so I guess you had a written-out process, and then now you, we have this, so can we merge these two and then bring it?
You could, because like. You could because like you indicated, we have created that process and have been following that process and if council elects to do some sort of minutes recorded, what have you, we could add that to that.
So can we turn the documents, these two documents that we have and the executed process that we have into what the final code will look like and then bring that before the council for us to review and then discuss so we have something to tweak? Would that be?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay.
You know, again, still need to have the discussion on what council wants to do and then we can go draft it.
I would suggest, just as far as where to put that, the options, Councilman Butler, would be the code would be one, and another would be making your bylaws or rules of order to detail how town council goes procedurally and to closed session comes out of closed session and whether or not it maintains any record of closed session. I think that would be another logical place to put it that I think a member of the public might first look and therefore promote transparency.
May I ask a question, now chair of the attorney? Sir, is this, I understand that they are protected under FOIA and like a lot of things that are FOIA oriented, it's the verbiage is a little, you have to really watch it very carefully because it says specifically that they're exempted under FOIA unless you decide to release them. Okay? Are, would these recordings be under that same type of verbiage that they're protected under FOIA unless we decided or voted as a council to release them? Is that correct?
That's correct. A FOIA exemption is discriminatory for the governing body and so you can elect to withhold them under FOIA, but it is up to you to decide whether or not to do so.
So.
As a FOIA officer.
So given the fact that all of council votes to release or not release it, one could assume that when they go into a closed session, for example, I go into a closed session and I am quite frank and candid and that's what closed sessions, I think the intent of closed sessions were with certain other things to come with it as far as protections for the benefit of the municipality and different things, but the bottom line is if I go into a closed session and I say something specifically that I want to be utilized in that closed session and intended for the benefit of my council members, they could then come back and I vote against releasing the minutes of what I had to say, they could on the other hand vote to release the minutes and what I assumed would be protected in the closed session could then become public record. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's correct.
Okay. And I just say that so when we go to vote, everyone is eyes wide open and you understand that you, when you have something that you wish to divulge that you presume would be protected under the closed session as we used to, that's no longer the case. I just want, that's what I wanted to make sure we're clear. Not that this should be worried or concerned or whatever. If we're there and we're doing the public's business and we say something, then I guess it's the public's business, but I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that if you may be in a position that you would divulge something, you can assure, be assured that that's not closed session anymore. That's going to be open session, just for what it's worth. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I might add, actually, just to expand on that point, you know, it's important to verify the distinction between FOIA and the ability to withhold documents from public inspection under those exemptions and confidentiality. You know, FOIA is a confidentiality provision. It provides for exemptions to the otherwise general goal of making the public business transparent through that act, but you know, if a public record is released after a town council vote, sure, that is perfectly permissible under FOIA. The other interesting thing to note though is that if a public record is released inadvertently or even through some kind of, you know, impermissible action, there's no confidentiality attached to that document. There's no NDAs for closed session or anything like that, so that once it's public, it's public, you know, and I, so I think that, that sometimes there's a view that closed session is confidential and I think it's intended to be for the very points you were making so that there can be candid discussions about matters that if disclosed could negatively affect the town's bargaining position or, you know, damage litigation postures, but you know, it isn't strictly confidential under, like something under an NDA would be. So if a document is released even inadvertently, I don't think there'd be much ability to get that back, you know, from the public record. I just wanted to make that point clear.
Thank you.
And I would like to say, I mean, that, that possibility existed whether you take minutes or not. That, you know, anybody could jot down the notes of what you're saying in the closed session and walk out and say them, there just wouldn't be that. But I understand your concern and that's a real valid concern and it may be notable as we're going through that we need to add this into our, into our procedure, so to speak, that, you know, redactions, especially for personnel exemptions, I don't foresee that we need to release anything, but maybe we do need to have an avenue and, Mr. McKenzie, maybe you can assist us with that, that we include an avenue in this that says redactions will be done as appropriately or what have you, right? And, but I think some of this goes back to what I touched on recently on coming out of closed session with some type of statement, you know, or at least closing with some type of understanding if, you know, because when I read this and this being the Freedom of Information Act and talk to others such as the VML attorney, you know, the first, the first part of the discussion is that, you know, what was discussed in closed session is not a secret, right? That was one of the first things discussed by the VML folks, so just some reference points on that. And then I just want to ask the question and maybe town manager or Mr. McKenzie or Ms. King, you might have some insight on this, but we have, I just want to think about too and not lose sight of, we have a position, it's a FOIA officer, right? They have training, maybe there's more training. We've asked the attorneys, I think, to identify if there's training or the town manager to seek additional training. That may be not taking the minutes part, but it kind of seems like, and maybe I, maybe I may have a lack of knowledge on this, what the actual purpose of that role is, but it seems to me that that person, you know, if they're the keeper of the sanctity of public information, so to speak, that, you know, that would be the person that might keep us on track, keep us, you know, keep the train on the tracks when we're going into closed session, that we're sticking to, you know, the topic that we identify. So I don't know if that's something that we want to include or consider. And in that writing of instruction, we can always, you know, as we did, ask anyone to leave as necessary. So just some thoughts on that.
I think what we're discussing, I mean, for the most part, Michael, you can correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of this discussion has to do with, are we going to do the recordings or are we going to do the full minutes? That's, that's.
The first part of that is are we taking recordings slash minutes of closed sessions? If that's a yes, then we determine that happening. If it's a no, then?
Well, sure.
But that's the first question.
But at the same time, if we go to A, we got to go to B.
Correct. A is yes.
But you can still stay at, you can still, still do the recording without having to do the full minutes of closed sessions, then maintain the recording as was indicated by Mr. McKenzie for the period of seven years.
That would be the only way I would recommend doing it.
That was what I was getting to, yeah.
Well, and I have a question too, if you're, Mr. McKenzie, as you alluded to, at some point, the council could, could elect to make, make those minutes public and to your point, Steve, what if this is a council that's two or three down the, down the low, you know, down the line and then that council chooses to make those minutes public, whereas maybe that wouldn't be our intention now, but this is something to think about.
Once it's there, it's there.
Right, right. I mean, I think it's a good idea that we have some information. You know, right now we could say, oh, we're meeting for personnel reasons and we have no, you know, years from, years later, you have no idea what we're talking about and this is, you know, we kind of had this issue. It's helpful if we knew what was discussed. However, to Steve's point, you know, there are times where you want those discussions to be. They're in closed session for a reason.
Personally, I think we dropped the ball with the last issue that you're talking about because we didn't have any minutes. I look at closed sessions as being, well, personnel matters or real estate negotiation or things that we need to discuss in confidence before a decision is made. And I think if it's done properly, if a decision is made on the town purchasing a piece of property or whatever, then when we come out of a closed session, then that should eventually become part of the public minutes. I do have some reservation. It definitely will make Town of Smithfield set in precedence when you say you couldn't find any other municipality that does that. I also checked with 32, one locally being the county and a couple of other city council meetings, and they do not take minutes or recordings in any closed session. And Mr. McKenzie, a closed session's designed to be confidential?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, the purpose of a closed session is to have a private discussion.
Okay.
And, and, and there are a myriad of ways, and I think we've referenced some of them, but there are many reasons and oftentimes you'll see in FOIA, which is the, which is the legal framework that allows you to go in closed session. And so, you know, just backing up FOIA, FOIA requires any time more the two of you get together and discuss the public business that is defined as a public meeting under FOIA and you need to meet all the public meeting requirements. So you need to let the public know that you're going to be getting together, you need to have access, you need to march through all those things. Then FOIA goes down another level and says, however, there's a list and it's, it has gotten, if you look at the act now, it's a very long list, of exceptions to that general public meeting requirements that you may need in private to discuss the items on this list. And you mentioned a number of them, you know, disposition or acquisition of real property, personnel, and oftentimes you'll see in that list though, that it is, there's, there's an explanation of why it's in there. So, you know, and I mentioned it in some of my comments earlier, we're, we're talking about, you know, A7 is litigation. So if you're, if you want to go into a closed session and discuss litigation with your attorney, you can do that. We're doing so could potentially negatively impact your litigating posture, right? So that's just an example, but that's, that's FOIA telling you, this is why you can go into a closed session and discuss this. Same thing with real estate where, you know, you know, or contracts, they're said, the FOIA says where it would negatively impact your bargaining position. Say, well, I don't want to, if, if open session, we discuss that we're willing to go up to, you know, we're going to offer 5,000, but we're willing to go up to 10,000. That hurts your bargaining position, right? Because you kind of, you've, you've said something that should be confidential until the deal is signed. Of course, once that deal is signed, that contract becomes public and it's out there in the public, but when you get up to that point, it's built for that. And so I think that is the big purpose and the intent of closed session, but it is, there's not, I think the comments I was making earlier is, you know, none of you signed an NDA that says that you will not discuss closed session matters outside of closed session. I think that is, that is the purpose of it, but there's nothing in the law that says that much. It just says that you are allowed to do it. You are allowed to go and speak in private as a governing body for these specific reasons. And I think that's the intent, but there's nothing written in the law that says if you take, you know, information that you learned in closed session and say it publicly, that's not a FOIA violation per se. Hopefully that answers your question.
It does answer my question. I've never really heard it say private conversation. If I have a private conversation with you, then I expect it to be between just the both of us. I guess I had always looked at it as being confidential and there's been some controversy about closed sessions and us not being transparent with the citizens. Now, I never looked at us doing that way, but I do have a concern that when we go in closed sessions for the right reasons and it's supposed to be a private conversation among the eight of us, if that does not happen, you know, I look at it as being, there are no consequences, so people are going to do that, but then I also lose trust when that happens. So I do have some concerns for it and I'm really not in favor of taking a recording in closed session because if we do it right, it's going to come back in the minutes which are open to the public.
I have a little bit to share on that. I understand that perspective, but I think the Freedom of Information Act is really clear about the intentions of government and who the beneficiary of the actions of government are, and that's the citizens. And I actually think it provides us each some accountability as far as, you know, there are, we were in closed session for, I don't know, an hour today and, you know, if the town manager needed to go back and look at something to formulate some process that he's doing, he has that capability. We have the capability to go back and look and see what we discuss with each other in the same way that we do here because the discussion we have in that room is just as important to us as the discussion we have in this room, yet we have no record of it and it projects to our citizens a form of secrecy, I believe. Additionally, the, the accountability that it provides to us, to the citizens, that, you know, we can go back and verify that what we said was factual. We don't have to go back and, and report it, but we can go back and verify what was factual in a conversation instead of having to remember, you know, did Joe say this to Bob? I mean, I, I think that that's a pretty archaic perspective to think that in 2025, we're going to have a meeting with no record. I just don't think it, it doesn't represent us well. We can do better than that. We are better than that. I would say that if there's no other locality in the state of Virginia that's taken records of their meetings for their own internal personal use as a governing body, well, I would be proud to be the first one in the state of Virginia to be doing that.
Can I comment on that, Darren? I don't know if I'm out of line doing it. I, I know recently we just had a situation where we discussed something in closed session and before discussing it, we were told that this subject had already been discussed with citizens. I have a problem with that. I have a problem when, when my town council members know that we go in a closed session, however, before sharing it with us first, that it's shared with outside people first. And personally, I think that that's doing a disservice and I do have trust issues about that.
Yeah, and I think, I think I recall the specific thing you're talking about and, you know, I'll just say, I introduced the topic in closed session and to the council and before I ever brought it to the council, I did speak to citizens about it because it was a conceptual idea. And if I didn't speak with citizens about a conceptual idea and speak to with people that I trusted and say, is this even worth bringing to the council? Should I even bring this up? Is this a quality idea or is this a harebrained idea? You know, to have the courage to come in here in public or in private and talk about it, you know, especially such a drastic thing, you know, if you.
And now what's happened? And now what's happened to it?
I mean, I don't, I don't think anything's happened to it. I think that.
I don't like, I don't, personally, I don't like that. Since I've been on town council, I don't really remember any situation where people have questioned us going into closed session. And I'm to the point now that maybe we don't need any closed sessions anymore. Maybe everything needs to be transparent. And if that's what you all decide to do, then I don't agree with it, but I'll go along with it.
Yeah, but I think the situation, the situation as you're concerned about, the discussions were had before a closed session was ever held. So I don't, so that's where I think that stands.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in. Couple things at play here. One, on a previous council, we had discussed possibly having a, I call it a corporate code of conduct, we can just call it a code of conduct, where we would all agree, this was at a retreat, and say, all right, here's our code of conduct, here's what we're expected to do and not do as council people. That never went through. I did hear non-disclosure just a few minutes ago as well. We've never been asked for an NDA. Do we have, do we need it? I don't know. But I will, I'm trying to tie this all together. When I go into a closed session, I am under the assumption that it is confidential and it stays in that room. And I know for a fact, again, go back to a previous council, that information in a closed session has gotten out to the public. I know it's happened. In fact, I got accused of it, and it wasn't me. And I'm with Valerie, I'm upset over this kind of behavior. It's not fun. And I'm at the point now, I think I'm with her. I don't see a need to have these things recorded. Let's say two councils from now, they want to open up a discussion that we had on XYZ project. It could happen. I don't want to be in that boat, so that's where I am with it.
I mean, I would also say about closed session, you know, the exemptions that you choose, let's take a property exemption that we're negotiating. Yes, we all know that that's, we would damage the town if we revealed that information. But otherwise, all the actions that we're taking, the exemptions that we're using are not intended to promote secrecy. So, you know, I just think that fears of, you know, I can't under, I don't think that I would come intentionally, speak about anything in closed session that I wouldn't talk about in open session, other than those specific items that we're in closed session for. So I guess what I'm saying is, if there's some fear about something that you're discussing that would be released in closed session that's not related to the exemption, then it probably shouldn't be being discussed there. Otherwise, everything in there is professional business, and we all understand the exemption that it's under. The fact that it's written down or recorded makes little difference, other than the capability for us to go back and have facts instead of opinions or he said, she said.
Is there any more discussion around how we want to handle closed sessions?
If not, Michael, I guess.
I guess I don't know what you guys want me to do.
Are we, okay.
Because I need some direction. If you want me to go draft in something for you guys to consider or not.
I think you had, we had some guidelines there, and I think.
Yes, we did.
We probably need to have them laid out so we can all look at them, discuss them. I mean, now we're kind of talking in cloud terms, you know, we're just kind of throwing things out, ideas. So we probably need to have something that's written down. We tweak it, we like it, we don't like it.
We voted up, we voted down.
Right.
Does that answer your question, Michael? No?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I will put something together for council to consider. We already have written procedures that we're currently following. Those will be on there, and then we will add something for council to consider dealing with recording a closed session minutes, and council can either vote for it or not for it.
And that'll be at the next committee meeting for further discussion?
If you want to discuss it more, or if you want to put it on council and vote one way or the other.
Mr. Mayor, I'd rather discuss it more. This thing is, you know, we've been here since 1752. I don't think another month of deliberation and thought is going to make a lot of difference. I really, this is something that.
Too much to have to be doing, I think, before next Tuesday, so.
Okay. I only have one other thing that I want to add under my committee. It shouldn't take but a minute. I think I responded to an email that we received recently, and Vice Mayor Harris was the only one that had responded. And I've talked to Michael about it before. I try to respond to all of my emails by citizens. My question is, when we receive an email from a citizen, do, and it's sent to all of us, do we want seven responses back to that citizen? Or would you be open to having someone respond on behalf of us?
No, I think we are all individual people and we have individual responses. I'm not a big fan of reply all, because sometimes there are people, there have been situations where someone has replied all, and we're talking about the person that, it's just not, it doesn't even make sense. But if each individual person wants to respond to that citizen, absolutely. I respond to every email that I get. I do not respond when it's sent to all of us. I don't hit reply all because it doesn't, doesn't need to be. I mean, you can, you have your take on a certain topic, Bill has a certain take on his topic, Derek, I mean, every single one of us, we may all have the same answer. You know, why is traffic so awful downtown? Well, we're all going to have the same answer. However, there are other times where we differ, and that's okay. It's okay that citizens hear that we have different viewpoints.
I think, to your point, that's all well and good, just as long as, like, maybe the last line is a disclaimer that says, I'm but one council member, this is my individual opinion, and this is coming from me, and it's not speaking on behalf of the entire council. And we all do that. I mean, that, to me, is really important, because if you don't, and you're the only one that responds, or I'm on vacation for a week and I don't respond, or whatever, and they get one response, and then they presume that the entire council is of that ilk, then it kind of misleads them as well. So, you know, that's the only thing I would say about that. Sometimes I respond, sometimes I don't respond, depending on what it is.
Well, I guess I'll leave that alone then.
What did you think? Yep, come on down.
I have a pet peeve about reply to all. I don't like doing that.
Yeah, I don't.
However, I just want to make sure, I know it's seven of us, seven different opinions. I guess it depend on the subject. I don't want a citizen to get an off-the-wall response for something. And, you know, it's something that I've asked Michael about before, and if Michael responds and I see it, I'm okay with it. But if a citizen sends me an email individually, I try to respond to all emails. But I don't know, I guess it's a survey we should take with the citizens. I just think it's unnecessary to get seven different responses.
I just think we have to be, when we're responding to a citizen, we keep that response to the citizen within the realm of the topic that they're saying, and we don't, we're not talking policy stuff or.
Editorializing.
Yeah, well, not even that, but we're talking about something, you know, changing the subject or whatever. We know who's on the list, you respond appropriately on the list, you know. I'm with you, I don't like, I never, rarely, I won't say never, but rarely hit reply all.
Well, it doesn't sound like it needs in a discussion. We can just continue to handle it like we're handling it.
Could I add one thing?
Yes.
Governor Butler? I think it might actually, it dovetails perfectly in the last two things you're discussing. If my preference, as a local government attorney, is also not to use reply all, and it's because of FOIA. If you get into an email exchange and there's more than two of you, and it's, in the law in this use is, you know, if it becomes a somewhat contemporaneous exchange in that people are emailing pretty quickly back and forth, FOIA could consider that a meeting. Because what's happening digitally is that more than two of you are getting together and discussing a matter of public business, and that can be deemed a meeting under FOIA. And if you haven't noticed it, it can be a FOIA violation. So, you know, I tend to always put, you know, no reply all as emails that I send to local governing bodies. And my counsel to you would be, I'm not saying that every reply all is automatically a FOIA violation, it's an issue of how quickly are you having responses, and is it becoming more of a conversation as opposed to an asynchronous, you know, series of emails? But it's our risk to use reply all. So I thought I'd throw that out here, since we've been discussing FOIA and this topic. And then the other thing that I would just point out for the record is, you know, I'm sure you all know this, but, you know, any individual response for you is an individual response, and the town council only speaks through a motion passed by a majority of the body. It's the only time the town council says anything. So, it's the public, you know, I think it's important for the public to know that, you know, no individual email sent by any of you could ever be a statement on behalf of town council. The only way town council speaks is through its properly carried motions.
Thank you for that information. If there is no further discussion, Public Works and, what is my committee? Public Buildings and Welfare is closed.
All right. Hearing none, meeting adjourned.